Okay. This is the meeting of the Board of Directors at the Marin Municipal Water District on 4/26/2022. And the meeting is about the Strategic Water Supply Assessment Working Session. And are you going to pick up the details, Ben, or you want me to do it about the?
All that. Comments, I think.
Okay.
We talked about.
Do it.
Okay, we do have quite a lot of information tonight to share with the board in public. So a couple of process suggestions. One, while we may not need to go this long, we do have a hard stop at 8:00 PM. So we're going to try and manage the meeting accordingly. And in an effort to be efficient, would like to suggest to the board that we get through the key segments and then open up the segments to questions. If that works. And then lastly, given the amount of information, there are suggestions to consider taking five-minute breaks at the hour or natural breakpoints. And we can check in with the board as we go on that as well. So with that, I'd like to hand this over to Armin, who's the Lead Project Manager on this with Jacobs Engineering.
I guess, Ben, before we do that, I need to call for public comment on items not on the agenda. I'm not quite sure about that, but I think that's the case.
President Russell, we actually, because it's a special meeting, we did not agendize general public comment. It's not required by the court.
Perfect, perfect.
Comment at the end of the meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All yours, Ben, or Arman.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Thank you, President Russell. Good evening, everyone. My, my name is Armin Manever with Jacobs Engineering. And as Ben just mentioned, I'm the project manager, leading the Strategic Water Supply Assessment for, for the Jacobs team and working closely along with the district staff. Wanted to just briefly introduce my colleagues who are with us, so you know who's on the screen. We have Marcelo Reggino, who's, who's our Deputy Project Manager and also leading our modeling, Decision Support Modeling side of it. So he'll be joining and having a speaking role today. Jim Logier is our desalination expert, and he'll be covering that topic today. Rujio Sutsuhashi is reuse expert, and he'll be available for questions should they come up. We don't anticipate doing as deep a dive as we may in the next sessions, but I wanted to let you know who the faces are on the screen if they are needed to be called upon. So with that, I will, I'm going to start to share the screen if, if we're good to move forward. Okay, great. Okay, and I hope, hopefully, everything's fine. Someone could just give me a quick thumbs up that everything's looking all right. Thank you.
Looks cool.
Okay, great. Well, thanks. We do have a lot of material to cover today, but really excited to be presenting and really hope this is a bit of a working session, a back and forth with the board. I know there's been several kind of high-level presentations of the Strategic Water Supply Assessment to the board over the past month. We've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes, pulling things together. And really are excited to kind of walk you through where we're at and kind of some of the, the key elements of the, of the project as we see it at this point in time. Just a little bit about, about me, I've been working with the kind of water management across the Western United States for a couple of decades now. Led a lot of the work on the Colorado River Basin, doing work in the Russian River and Central Valley throughout, little internationally as well. And so really what I enjoy the most are problems like, like the ones you're trying to tackle right now at Marin is these really complicated problems of how do we deal with uncertainty? How do we make decisions within that realm of uncertainty? And how do we ensure that you're kind of set up for success moving forward? So that personally, I, these are the type of projects kind of I, I live for, working, working on and working with. So what we want to talk about today is a little bit, just a little bit of background for the project overview. I know you folks have heard this before, but I maybe just to set the stage. We'll talk a little bit about the, or quite a bit about the assessments and the process we're conducting. We'll talk about the drought scenarios. We have a little bit to set the stage on the type of problem that we're looking to, to help resolve or reduce risk, improve resiliency. Decision support model, what it is, what it's not, how it's going to be used. And then we'll do a, I'd say kind of a mid-level dive on the, the water management alternatives that we're considering. And then a little bit on the evaluation process. And then we'll kind of pull it back up and talk about where we're heading on the, on the strategic roadmap. And I'm glad to hear that there will be breaks along the way, so we'll try to find those, those right spots and, and wrap up those sections. And I'll look to the board and Ben and Paul to, to give me the heads up on that. Just a little bit about what we're planning today. So my understanding, it was agreed to provide periodic updates to the, to the board on this project over time. Today, we want to talk about a little bit of a detailed overview of the water supply assessment. It's not the deep dive for sure, but it's deeper than probably we've looked at in the past. In May, we intend to do focus sessions, first one on demand management and how that could and could be incorporated into this effort. The second session in May, we're proposing, we would talk about the drought scenarios and baseline reliability. So we hope to have some initial results to share already at that point on the baseline aspects. And then in June, we'll, we'd like to do a deep dive on the water supply alternative. So a deeper dive on D cell, a deeper dive on reuse and storage, Sonoma Water connections and reliability. And then finally, towards the end of June, we hope to have a discussion around the evaluation process. So how do we make sense of all the, the work that's been conducted up to that point? So that's, that's the, the lay of the land as we see it for the next two months. So just a high-level overview of, of the project, you know, Strategic Water Supply Assessment, really driven by, by drought planning as we understand it and really know the work that has been done over with your staff and your board over the, the past number of years to really identify options and create resiliency to drought. So we really want to build on that effort, those, that work that has been done in the past. We've relied quite a bit on, on that work, done a lot of our homework over the past several weeks. We're really targeting to comparative analysis of water supply options available to the district and provide recommendations, not necessarily on a single option or a single silver bullet, but on a strategic water supply roadmap. And, and we feel that likely will result in, in a little bit more of an informed decision than a selection of a single project. And then really the backdrop is we're responding to this accelerated pace of climate change and greater hydrologic extremes. And we're starting to see this throughout the, the Western United States in particular. And so really, that's, that's the backdrop, that's setting the stage for, for our assessment. In terms of what we hope the, the project will produce is really an understanding of what the current risk is to, to the district's water delivery reliability under recent and future droughts. We're doing a little rearview mirror look at hydrology and hydroclimate, but then also peering through the, through the forward-looking part and looking at climate projections and other projections. Looking at how, how much additional water supply might be needed under those different hydrologic futures and drought and demand scenarios. And then what are the, the range of water supply alternatives that could increase resiliency to the system? And what are the strengths and weaknesses of each of those alternatives? And then finally, we want to take all that information and roll it into a, into a strategic roadmap for both the near-term drought resiliency, but also longer-term supply reliability. We have just a, these are not a complete list of, of strategy considerations, but a couple that tend to form the basis of what we're trying to do is first is, you know, really understand drought, how does, what is drought, how does it manifest itself? What is the, the behavior that we're trying to respond to, the, the behavior of the natural system? Recognizing that, that the future is very uncertain, we have lots of uncertainty, and we don't try to force certainty where, where it does not exist. So we, our approach is really to embrace that uncertainty. And then how do we respond to that uncertainty? How do we make best, the best decisions given that level of uncertainty? And I think the final kind of broad principle that we're taking to heart is, is really looking at supplemental supply and demand management essentially on the same, on the same ledger, the same approach as we work to tackle, tackle reliability and resiliency. Okay, just moving forward in terms of what the, the project scope actually consists of. This has been presented before as well, but the first three are kind of a block of understanding the current risk and establishing goals. Who want to confirm the water supply strategy and goals? I understand there's been a number of conversations at the board already, so we'll, we'll talk about that towards a, a little bit towards the end of the discussion today. There's a decision support model, which is really a, a systems analysis model to look at how does your system function, what happens if different supplies come online, different droughts come online, how does that affect the risk of the system? Then looking at water supply and demand scenarios, so what are those types of futures that we can anticipate? Not, not a single future, but multiple futures. And then we get into the next block, which is really about identifying and evaluating the water management alternatives that can, can help him improve the resiliency of the system. And there will be, we'll talk a little bit about those alternatives as well as the process to evaluate them. And then finally culminating into this recommendation and a roadmap for, for moving forward. So for today, what I'd, where I'd like to start is a little bit on the, the approach for our water supply and demand scenarios. We like to use this graphic because it helps to describe kind of what we know and what we don't know about the future. So all we can really say is what we do know is where we, where we've been, we can. Look back, back, what are those possible features that occur, both in terms of hydrology and a more variable climate? And as well as demand and, and changes in, in water use efficiency. So we, we understand that there's lots of potential changes in climate and drought, demands, policy and regulations. We want to look for solutions that are robust across those. And our scenarios will include historical scenarios where we'll look at historic, history of droughts and water supply that we've observed over the past hundred years or so. Climate projections that are based on the latest available downscale climate projections, general circulation models. And then we've started to look at the paleo reconstructions to, to understand some of the very distant hydrologic sequences. And very likely will be developing stress test hydrologies as well that are not necessarily derived explicitly from each one, one of the historic or the future or the paleos, but there'll be a, a bit of a hybrid to test the system. I think I've talked about that in terms of our scenarios, the way we've set up the study is the scenarios are intended to capture the uncertainty that is not part of the decision of this, of this assessment. So what happens kind of in the background, if we don't control climate, we don't control hydrology, we respond to it. From a demand standpoint, we want to look primarily at, at those factors that are driving, driving demand outside the control of the study in terms of our scenarios. And then we'll have demand management options as part of the actions or the alternatives that are being considered. So things like population growth and recent trends in water use efficiency will be included in these scenarios as well. Okay, so backing up just a little bit in terms of looking at the, the state of the, of the land and the, the climate over the past several years. I just want to just talk about the dry conditions have been persisting across the, the Western United States for, for almost two and a half, almost three years at this point. In some basins, like the Colorado Basin, it's on the order of decades where they've had dry conditions. But this particular drought has been really most pronounced in, in California. The graph here is showing the, a measure of drought. So this is the standard precipitation and evapotranspiration index. It's a scale of, of essentially how much water is available from precip minus the water that gets evaporated to the atmosphere. So kind of a net, a net precip term. And the scale goes to the reds where it's been in dry conditions and white are neutral. And then the blue scales turn up into the positive. So you can see throughout the Western United States, we're, we're affected by substantial drought. There's been governor's orders as of a couple of weeks ago in terms of pushing, increasing drought measures in California. So you are not alone. I guess that's the key message here is that everyone in the Southwest is essentially grappling with very similar issues of, of drought. I think a key point I wanted to start with when we talk about, um, talk about how we get supply kind of in Northern California, particularly coastal California. Atmospheric rivers tend to be responsible for the majority of the precipitation in, in Northern California and coastal California in particular. Now, this is the, the satellite-generated information for precipitable waters or total water in the atmosphere that could make its way into rainfall. And, and we are not seeing an atmospheric river at this point. So these are the last, last couple of days. I, I pulled these off this morning. So this is the last couple of days, but so we're not seeing an atmospheric river. But you can see the circulation patterns where, where we start to see moisture that, that gets turned around roughly off of the coast of Hawaii, the Hawaiian Islands, and makes its way to, to California. And when there's enough moisture in that atmosphere, they, they form these bands of atmospheric rivers, which are, you know, two to, two to 300 kilometers in width. And, and tend to produce the majority of the large-scale precipitation events in coastal California. So I think it's important to recognize kind of where, where the water comes from. And then if we look back at the, the last three years, well, two years and, and the current year, this is work that we've, that I pulled from the center, the CW3E group out of scripts in San Diego. And they've done their, a large part of their effort is to track atmospheric rivers' presence and absence of them. And most of the droughts are often defined by lack of significant atmospheric river events. So the, the plot on the left here is showing the landfalling locations of atmospheric rivers over water year 2020 and water year 2021, so the last two years. One thing that you can see just visually from this here is the, generally the northerly landing of these atmospheric rivers, missing, missing Northern California, hitting Oregon and Washington quite well. On average, California sees about seven strong or, or greater magnitude atmospheric rivers in, in a particular year. Over those two years, only three, three of those events occurred. So that's well behind the, the 14 or so that would have been expected on, over those two years. And then in this current year, water year, where we're still experiencing the outcome, but we're getting, we're running out of time. Now, we had a very good start to the atmospheric rivers with the large storms in, in October and, and in November. But even at, under that condition, we've only experienced five atmospheric river events. So in general, for the last three years, we are in an atmospheric river deficit period. And water year 2020 and 21 were substantially on the, on the deficit side. So I think it's really important to recognize kind of the, the lack of these events are what drive our droughts and the presence of a lot of these events are what drive our floods. And that's, that's really the, the important aspect. So that on the flip side, a number of these vents fill your reservoir is quite, quite easily. And we go from drought planning to flood planning quite quickly. So another area we've been looking at is terms of how do these droughts manifest themselves? We've looked at, for Marin County, the average temperature, air temperature and total precipitation for the last 100 and 140 years, almost, information from, from NOAA. And what we've done here is plotted the data on, on the scale where essentially if it's wetter than average, it's on the right-hand side of this vertical line. And if it's warmer than average, it's on the upper side of the horizontal line. And so each year, and I'm just going to let it kind of roll through, each year is plotted as a dot from 1886 to 2021. And as, as you can see, we've got lots of variability, we have wet and dry periods, we have warm and less warm periods. And then I've started to highlight some of the, the more extreme dry periods in red and the wetter periods in blue. So you can see as we get to 1976, 1977, which is still our, our drought of record for a two-year drought. We might break it this year, but as of, as of now, it's still the drought of record. So we had a really dry, dry period, but it was not anomalously warm. It was kind of nu- neutral in terms of the, the temperature standpoint. 2014 and 15 was also quite a significant drought period. It was an extremely warm, anomalously warm period. And if we keep scrolling forward to the, to the current drought, so we've got water year 2020, 21, and we'll see where 2022 ends up finally. But I think the key point of this here is that 1976 and 1977 were really quite severe droughts, but they are probably not the most reflective of the current drought. So we will see extreme droughts that will be much warmer than 1976, 77. And this is something we're seeing quite a bit across, across the United States in terms of this condition of our, our current droughts are perhaps worse than, than historical droughts. We did the same thing, looking at the climate projections. So we looked at climate projections, we're using 20, 20 individual projections. There are 10 general circulation models or global climate models. And 10 of them have been selected out of a, a group of about 40 or so that, that tend to represent California's climate better than, than some of the other models. This was a process done by DWR's Climate Change Technical Advisory Group. So we use those 10 global climate models under two emission scenarios. So that gives us 20 individual projections. And I'm just going to show one of them that, and how it falls within this, this whole array, that same array that we just looked at before. And I think the key points here are really to look at virtually every year is drier than the average that we saw on the previous, on the previous historical condition. So we're certainly seeing that effect of, of increasing temperatures. And we're also seeing, seeing some projections out there that are, are looking beyond the two-year sequence. So we see one here at least that is a three-year sequence of pretty extreme dryness and extreme warm temperatures. So I think the key, the key point of that is just to understand that our current droughts are probably better represented by some of the future projections than they are of looking too far back in the historical period because of the, the effect of warming. We've also been looking at, at how that manifests itself in terms of hydrology in terms of stream flow. So what we've plotted here, and I'll walk through it slow enough so we can understand it and happy to take questions if you don't. We've looked at the Russian River flows, we're, we'll update this for, for Marin flows, but we haven't been able to get all the data prepared at this point. But this is work we're doing on Russian, on the Russian River, so total supply of the Russian River over 1940 to 2021. And we plotted a number of the more extreme droughts associated with, with this condition. Here, any year that was below at long-term mean was, is plotted as a deficit. And if it continued to be long, below long-term mean for a number of years, we quantified that in terms of the length of that deficit. So what we can see here, if we just start with 1976 and 1977, there was a two-year drought, it ended in, with the year of 1977, 78 was a very wet year. So it was a two-year drought, but it produced a, a deficit of almost, almost 3 million acre feet. So you can think of it this way, as Russian River flows from, for 20, 1976 and 77 were 3 million acre feet lower than they are the long-term mean. Now, 19, 20 and 2021 was very similar, maybe two and a half million acre feet, but very similar to 1976, 77 drought. But you can see, we've also had much longer droughts that were deeper, not as severe in the first two years, but maybe 87 to 92, it's kind of a traditional drought in California that we've experienced almost everywhere as our longest, one of our longest droughts. So I had almost the 5 million acre feet deficit and the six was six years in length. If we go a little further back in time, 1950 was an eight-year drought, but not quite as severe as, as the 87 to 92. And then we've also plotted the 2016 period, the 20, 2002 and the 2010 period. It is interesting to look at that three out of the, the most, four out of the most severe are within the last, the last 20 years or 22 years. Now, so we've also, we've then said, okay, well, what are the climate projections show? So the gray lines are the exact same data that was on the previous slide. And what we've overlain here is just two, two projections that produced some very significant droughts. From, these are the names of the general circulation models and the emission scenarios or the representative concentration pathways associated with those models. We see a drought out here, the long period of seven years and a substantially greater deficit. And then we see another one that's quite similar to the 87 to 92 drought. It's actually falls right on top of that, that scenario. So we're still doing some further analysis here, but I think the key point is that we want to look at both the history and the future and, and build enough scenarios that really test the system against what might be coming its way through either that history or that future outlook. Okay, I'm gonna, Ben, I'm kind of looking for you if I should pause it. That's, I'm going to switch gears to, to move to the next.
Yeah, I, I think this would be a good break if then we're going to move into the, the different kind of elements to take questions from the board.
Armin, this is a really great, this is a very powerful projection. And can you, could you put that cumulative deficit in percent of, of, of mean flow? It's hard, it's hard to understand the magnitude and the millions of acre feet of deficit as millions of acre feet without comparing it to the meat, what the actual mean number is. Is that a, can you make that a percentage in some way or give some scale?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I unfortunately don't have it in the back of my head, what the long-term mean is, but absolutely could. I think the key for us is really looking at what are the periods that created the worst-case conditions? But yeah, we could put that in, add percentage on the right-hand scale. That might be the best way to do that.
I, I don't really have a question. I'll just say thanks. I agree with Monty. I think it's powerful. I think it's great to have all this data pulled together in one place. It's very consistent with, you know, with what we've been seeing broadly in California and the West on climate change. So I, I'm really glad to see that you're not just looking backwards. I think we need to, but I think looking forward at what's happening with climate change. You know, your point about temperature, you know, I was just at a conference where the, the temperature. You know, I was just at a conference where uh, the, the temperature, I mean, the, you know, somebody presented from the recent IPCC report and it was, um, it was alarming. So um, I really appreciate your um, gathering that data and making it relevant locally. We need that. The public needs that.
Thank you. Okay, I'll, I'll continue then. Ben, you just do a timeout if I need to stop. Um, I, one last comment I do want to make on this one is um, we've been looking at the dry side of it. Everything on the graphs we've been looking at is what, what is the dry side of it? Like I mentioned before, there, the, the projections are for atmospheric river events to be both kind of the, uh, both the extremes expanding. So the dry period expanding where we have a lack of um, atmospheric river events. But when we, but on the flip side, the flooding is also expanding. So we're actually seeing greater extremes on the flood side when the atmospheric river events occur, they generally are, are carrying more moisture, just a warmer atmosphere carrying more moisture and their ability to drop more precipitation on the ground. Uh, we've done work for the state of California and, and for Sonoma Water, looking at roughly twenty, thirty, uh, forty percent increases in atmospheric rivers of intensity when they do occur. Um, and there was a, a study that just came out today or yesterday from the PUC, um, essentially saying the same types of things, thirty, thirty-five percent increases in those severe atmospheric river events. So there is a flip side to it. We're just showing the low, the low side of it because we're talking about water supply today.
You, that, but the, um, I think that understanding to the, the, the intensity of the flood events is help, would be helpful for us too in some way, obviously, because that's, that what we just experienced, for example, this last fall is when we saw high-intensity rainfall. Unfortunately, our, our, you know, or, or by circumstance, our reservoirs were empty and able to, to capture a lot of that. And, and we benefited hugely because of it, of course, but it, it's in, it's, that is part of the nature of our future water supplies. We're gonna get a lot uh, in short periods. And so that might influence the kinds of water management projects we want to pursue that allow us to be able to take wet water at a high rate and put it somewhere.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, great, great point. And absolutely, um, when we actually run the scenarios through the, the modeling analysis, we'll be we'll be taking all of the information. So it'll be, it'll be generating sequences of hydrology that are both more extreme on the wet side and more extreme on the dry side. And we'll see the, the effect of that on the reliability of the system. But that absolutely point well taken. Okay, well, thank you. I'll, I'll keep moving unless there are comments. Um, we did want to talk, so what I just uh, presented there was to kind of set the stage for the droughts, drought scenarios that we'd be looking at. Um, and that's going to result in a certain level of baseline reliability or resiliency. So how well does the system respond under its current state to those, those conditions? Uh, and we know we're gonna have challenging sequences that are gonna uh, require various water management alternatives to be investigated and assessed. And so we want to be quite broad in how we look at those water management alternatives. So this is the, the graphic on the right. Is a representation of our approach. We want to look at this broad range of alternatives that look at supply, supplemental supply, demand, management options, the options that might look at modifying operations or infrastructure. Um, and then pol-, you know, some policy and governance options. We'll be looking at all of those through the, through a decision support model and then doing an evaluation of those uh, with respect to economic, environmental and social attributes. So we'll develop a representation of how well each of those perform against various criteria. And then we fully anticipate that we'll look at portfolios, so combinations of, of management options together to look at which ones might perform the best over time. So that's the, kind of the really high-level picture of, of where we're going on the water supply assessment, kind of the process. And I'm gonna pause for a moment. We're gonna do just a, a brief little summary of the decision support model. And I'll ask Marcelo Reggino to the, to walk us through a few steps there. He's, he's leading our, our decision support modeling effort right now.
Yep. Well, thank you, Armin. And uh, yeah, everybody, I'm gonna give you an idea of what is this uh, decision support model. That uh, that is the tool that we will be using to process all these data that Armin uh, just described and some more. Uh, I guess you could call the process to reach a decision, also the decision supports model. But no, uh, this is, this will be talking about the tool that we'll be using to process all this information. So it started uh, with the Sonoma Water. We start building this model for the, the entire system here. And I'm trying to show here the extent, the model domain, which starts all the way up north in Lake Pillsbury. And uh, the Russian River and includes the, the main reservoirs, Mendocino, Sonoma. And the collectors divert water from the Russian River into the Sonoma Transmission System, Sonoma Water Transmission System, which could deliver water to Marine. So in the, in the left here is the big picture kind of schematic of the system that we are modeling. Of course, our model has a lot more detail. That's the, the figure on the center of the, of this slide here. So that includes all the reservoirs we're modeling, inflows, uh, depolitions of, on the Russian River. So is a, is quite, it, it can get a little complex there. And at the bottom of the um, schematic, you see the Marine system. And that's the part of the model that we are expanding now. That's the, the schematic on the, on the right. That's the Marine system that we are expanding. So this is a tool. It's a, it's a developed in a, a software called GoldSim. Which is a, it's not a hydraulic model. It's a more of a systems model, water balance kind of model. And uh, uh, so yeah, we're expanding now the, the Marine. Uh, when I say expanding, we're adding more detail uh, to the Marine part of the, the system. So the next slide. I'm gonna Armin, yep. So this is a, the, the Marine system that's, uh, we're expanding our systems model. So here you can see on the left side, which kind of represents the west uh, region of your system. That's where you have all, uh, your, most of your reservoirs. And you have the, the watershed divides there. So there's a, a physical barrier between the reservoirs and the, the Marine distribution system on the west. So uh, this is just to, to give you an idea of uh, what are the elements in our model and how we're gonna connect uh, these elements. There are uh, definitely things on this schematic here that are not in place, uh, like desalination. So uh, but we will have in the model with the switch, where we can turn on and off those things, add capacity uh, and add more connectivity. So this is just the model that we're gonna uh, simulate. So uh, just to give an idea, the, the, what are the inputs to this model, right? It's not rainfall. It's a river flows. And uh, we got that from also Sonoma. So we, uh, river flows that get into the, the system. Uh, then we have also the reservoir flows, local supplies. So some uh, uh, Marine uh, has all, uh, it's a local uh, reservoirs and a little bit of a recycled water. So there are system demands. So we can play also with the demands in the system. Uh, and limitations. And it could be pipe limitations, uh, pump stations. Or could it be limitations on the operation, how you operate your system? On the, the model outputs, we can create model scenarios, different scenarios, different alternatives. Uh, we can uh, check the deliveries for the different supplies. So how much your system will get out of, uh, out of a, a surface water or imported water or desalination if we have reservoir levels and overall system flows across the, the system. Next slide. Just to give you an example, right? Uh, how, how are we gonna see results? Eventually, we're gonna present some of that. So this is just a sample. Uh, uh, so you, you start to get an idea how we get data out of this model. So in your left side here, just this showing uh, the deliveries, how, how Marine is uh, meeting the demands with what sources? So the purple line is the surface water on an annual basis. So how much surface water is getting to meet uh, its demands? The other shore, uh, supply is the aqueducts, so imported water and some recycled water. So uh, right now, those are the, the supplies, but we will have scenarios that we could have other supplies like desalination, for example. Uh, we not only uh, seen those in an annual basis. Uh, the model actually runs in a daily time step. So we could go in a daily time step if, if we need to. But uh, just to present results is a good idea to start on annual, then see seasonality. That's uh, what do you see in the second plot here in the middle? That's uh, when you see the monthly patterns on when you receiving that water, when you get the surface water, when you get the imported water from the aqueducts and when you have the recycled water. Uh, so on a monthly basis. And then uh, finally, on the, on the right side here, just to give you an idea as an example, how you will see uh, the results of any stochastic simulation. So Armin was talking about all those different hydrology scenarios that we have, all the different traces uh, of hydrologies. And let's say we have a hundred different traces and we're gonna run all these in our model. Uh, we can see here, just this example here is showing uh, Marine Municipal Reservoirs, the total storage that you have in the system. This is kind of showing the bands of uncertainty uh, related to the model uh, scenarios that we run. Where you can see the black line was the median of all the scenarios that we run. Fifty percent of the scenarios were above that and fifty percent were below that. And then you, you see the different percentiles. That's what the different shades uh, represents. So the lighter shades represents, those are scenarios that are less likely to happen, although we, we had a few scenarios that reached that level, but most scenarios are within the darker areas uh, of that plot. So that's again, this, just to give you a flavor of how we're gonna present results in the future and the capabilities of the model uh, now to run this kind of uh, analysis.
Great. Thank you, Marcelo.
Yep.
So I have a question.
Please.
Um, if I could, which you plotted the um, low water years uh, in, in the previous section. And then, you know, we have sort of a probability graph here, the gray and black graph. So I assume that that data includes probability of above-average perci- precipitation. In other words, the heavy-duty ARs that we were talking about. And I'm wondering, do we have historic data on that? And do we have um, probability of future ARs with uh, climate change?
Uh, yeah, very good question. Thanks for that, that. We have both of those. So the answer is yes to both. So both historically, we have a representation of atmospheric river. So we're looking at at essentially daily hydrologic sequences for the last hundred years. So to the extent they're represented in the history, we have that. And then we're using climate projection information, which includes both that dry side and the wet side. And that will be included in our scenarios as well.
And do we have that data for the Russian River?
We have the data for the Russian River and we have, we have the data. We need to still do some compilation for your local sources as well.
So at some point, are you gonna break out the, you know, above-average data for the Russian River? So we could sort of see the trend lines historically?
We can, we can certainly do that, you know. Right now, they're all, like the graph that's on the right that Marcelo just showed, actually has all of it thrown together, both the
Right, 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 right. It, it, I would be interested just to see the variability and, and sort of the chronicity of the variability.
Yeah.
Yeah, but only for, the, this chart here is only showing the historical. But a- as you can see here, because it's a storage, the, the wet traces, you're gonna start spilling from the reservoir. But i- i- it's killed the, the black line, which, which is the fifty percentile to the top, right? So that's indicates that you have more uh, wet years than uh, uh, dry years for, for the historical analysis. I, I guess, in the result, in the, in the storage, how that is impacting the storage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless we could increase storage somehow.
Exactly, yes.
I think someone was speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was muted. Do you want questions about the model now? Or do you want us to wait until a later point? I want to be sure that I'm, I'm tracking your approach here.
Well, we've got a lot to go through, but glad to take maybe a
I'll wait till you're, I'll wait till you're ready. I can come back to the model when you're, I don't want to interrupt.
Armin, I'd suggest we take it because we're really gonna be moving to the water supply options. And Director Kohler has a question. Why don't we go for it?
Sure.
Okay, um, so first of all, I'm, I'm very pleased to see you've put this kind of model together. Um, it's exactly what we need, I think, to do scenario planning. Um, so one of my, my overarching question is, how many scenarios do you think you'll be running? I mean, I realize you're still at a preliminary point, but what's your, what's your thinking about the scenarios? Just a gross number.
Probably on the order of five, but when we, when we say five scenarios, that means like historic one would represent a hundred years. So we'd have a hundred, what we call traces as part of that scenario. And, yeah, so probably five scenarios is kind of the, the realm, I think, that is best to capture that envelope or that funnel.
Got it. And then will you be integrating, will you be integrating um, pricing, capital costs, operating costs? Is that gonna be part of what you include?
We will include that as part of the water management alternative. So they'll be evaluated on with cost and um, aspects associated with it. We were
Right. I know that. I'm asking specifically about the decision model, whether that's part of the inputs you'll be using.
No, the decision model is, is really, just think of it as a water balance. It's a water balance and a reservoir operation model. So it does not have cost as an input to it. That's outside of the process.
Got it. No, no problem. I'm just trying to understand the process. And so, which leads to my next question, which is, I, I found, I mean, we just had a little teeny bit of time to look at these slides before the meeting. And I think, I, I mean, they're, they're great, but I, it was hard for me to unpack them. Would it be possible for you to list out for the board and the public, the particular um, endpoints and endpoints that are going to be you know, that basically serve as the structure, as I understand, it was just explained of the, of the model?
If I, if I understand you correctly, I think they're listed on, on the bottom here. I don't, Director Kohler, maybe.
Oh, maybe, like I say, I just had like a minute to look at this. So they're all just in this teeny, um.
Yeah, the bottom, the lists, those are the
Which is model main inputs and model main outputs. Oh, okay, there they are. Sorry. I was looking at the, at the graphic. Okay. And that's, and that's kind of a complete list right there.
That's, yeah, that's the primary list. And, and then also this expanded all the way up to the Eel River and down to the Bay. So this is the focus just on Marin system right now.
Okay, so you're not, so, okay, so you're not using this, and it's not a criticism. This is just me trying to understand what, what the model is going to be used for. So this is not where you're gonna be, you're, so you're not gonna be doing scenarios that, um, assuming different levels of efficiency and demand, it looks like.
Um, so that
demands, but I don't know if that includes different levels of, of efficiency.
Yeah, so the, our scenarios will include certain representations of, of demands. And we can, the model itself can change the demands. It can explore different scenarios. So that will be part of what we're calling the scenarios. It'll also be part of the water management alternatives. So if we choose to address a certain aspect of drought through a enhanced water conservation program, that would also be used. The model will also help us. The model will also help us assess that.
Um, okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. We might come back to your, I I can see a lingering
I think, well, my lingering question is, there's a difference between you. I I mean, I think for the board and I think also for the public, there's uh there's looking at the alternatives, but before you get to the alternatives, there's the, you know, I sort of see the scenario planning as an opportunity to explore. Um, you know, well, different scenarios. And so um I I think waiting until you're down the road and you're exploring those alternatives. Um, I I think that's just a conversation the board needs to have maybe, but I I don't want to, I want to let you keep going with your. I mean, there's, you see the difference between running those different scenarios as part of the scenario planning with your model versus later, when you're already, you've got your alternatives, because there's going to be a smaller. I mean, this is, this is a process that gets narrower, not broader, right? So um by the time you're exploring alternatives, you're pretty far down the road, I think.
Yeah, so w- the way we laid this out in in May, the first uh, our first meeting in May would talk about demand management. The second one would be about the specific scenario. So we'll give you then the the details of what's in each of the scenarios for and have that discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we're not actually that far down the road in in terms of narrowing. We're still really broad where we're at right now.
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
Okay, um it's hard to read the room here, so I'm gonna keep marching forward unless someone pops up and says, stop. Uh we did want to spend some time and and talk about the alternatives that are being considered. So again, the scenarios are those things that are not part of the decision process. So there will be some um, you know, there's the hydroclimate, there's demand, there's growth assumptions, there's water use efficiency, baseline water, use efficiency assumptions that will go into those those scenarios. Then when we look at how do we address the resiliency or the reliability challenges? We have an initial list of of categories of options right now that are on the screen. So we'll be looking at at um alternatives that look at Sonoma Marin partnerships, whether it's through additional purchase of 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 water from Sonoma or participation in 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 banking type arrangements. Uh, the purchases and conveyance through bay inner ties, like the one you're exploring right now with East Bay Mud. A desalination, reuse, surface storage augmentation, like was just brought up and taking advantage of some of those higher flow events, other supply options, and then demand management as a, as a tool for addressing drought drought resiliency and reliability. What we wanted to do is spend just, we have quite a bit of content here, so we wanted to give you just a a high level overview of what we're considering under each of these categories. And we'll try to, I'm going to ask my team to to do it fairly, fairly fast and high level. Um and we can come back to details and we will have a a session in the June timeframe where we'll talk about each one of these in 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 quite a bit more detail. So I'm sorry for the, being kind of brief, we're trying to keep within the time as well. And so just starting with the Sonoma, we're calling the Sonoma Marin partnerships, really is about how how can we um help your district take advantage of some of the the water supply that is available, particularly the surplus supply that's available on the Russian River. And so we've come up with options of maximizing take of that winter water, both with the existing infrastructure. So we wanted to first to kind of figure out the limits of of uh taking uh Sonoma water, the winter water with the existing infrastructure. And then look at any bottlenecks that exist. You you know, you're resolving one with Castagna improvements. There are some, a couple of other bottlenecks within your system that might prevent you from taking the maximal amount. So we want to look what if you in- enhanced, improve the uh or remove the bottlenecks and improve the infrastructure to allow that. Um and then we want to look at dedicated conveyance to to reservoirs, so dedicated Marin conveyance. Uh supporting uh Sonoma water on some of their well rehabilitation that's underway right now. And potential for participating in a regional groundwater bank. And I'll just touch on a really high level. So we're looking kind of this simple schematic on the right, looks at the, you know, the Russian River and the collectors and the transmission system and moving water through the through the aqueduct past Castagna and into into Marin system. We want to look at how do we maximize that? Are there ways we could do that operationally? Are there small pinch points that we can help resolve? Whether it's um, you know, Ignacio pump station or 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 pinch points within the aqueduct system that itself, the transmission system. Uh we do want to look at um direct conveyance. So could we not just take winter water from, from the Sonoma Water Transmission System and put it into the distribution system, but could you put water directly into Suluhuli or Nacasio reservoirs? My schematic got moved around a little bit, but uh like North Marin is attempting to do by backfilling uh Lake Stafford with some of their water. So they're creating a small, small amount of storage of 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 Sonoma Water, Winter Water into their system. Could we, could we do the same in Suluhuli or Nacasio? Um, supporting the Santa Rosa Plain Wells Rehabilitation Sonoma Waters. Um that has some initial funding from DWR to rehabilitate three of their wells, the Todd, Sebastopol and Occidental Wells to regain capacity that they previously had with those wells. Accelerating that or really, it's quite a bit of improvement into the system and that's water that gets pumped into the transmission system and is available independent of Lake Sonoma storage. So it is, can be thought of as somewhat of a drought supply. Um there's also concepts floating around in terms of a regional groundwater bank. This is very much at the conceptual level. Um but potential for storage in Santa Rosa Plain, Sonoma Valley and Petaluma Valley. Each one of those or one of them could have a um an agreements in which ASR wells are are developed in those in those basins to put water in the ground. It could largely be winter water, so excess uh Russian River water put into the aquifer and then taken out during dry years to essentially become a a dryer supply. Uh through the delivery would not have to be direct, so it wouldn't have to be water pumped out of the ground, put into the aqua or transmission system and delivered to Marin. It could be done through in lieu exchanges in which an overlying uh agency could take water from groundwater and leave water in the Sonoma Water Transmission System for Marin to use downstream. So that, that was kind of the Sonoma Marin options. We're also looking at four different possibilities on on conveyance through the bay inner ties. Um obviously, the East Bay Mud intertie with Sack Valley purchases, trying to move it through East Bay Mud system. Um and then across the the bridge uh with pipeline and pump stations. There's a another option where we, it could be looked at in terms of, rather than tying into East Bay Mud, tying into Contra Costa Water District directly. It's a, it's a longer pipeline and and higher cost associated with it, but we wanted to look at that. Uh there's the North Bay Aqueduct, um and then potential for a a inner tie, San Francisco PUC inner tie. So we have, we have just kind of high level uh concept here. We're developing basically fact sheets and cost estimates for each of uh each of these right now. Um the East Bay Mud one would would, you know, purchase water, move it across across the bridge. Lots of uh inner relationships with other agencies. North Bay Aqueduct was, has been looked at a number of times in terms of extending the the inner tie with the North Bay Aqueduct either directly to Marin or tying into Sonoma Water System um more on the eastern side. Okay, and then, then I want to switch to water reuse. So I'm sorry, I'm kind of trying to pick up time here. For water reuse, we're looking at four different categories of reuse, just um kind of the purple pipe concepts of recycled water, expanding the existing system, some some similar to what peak the Peacock Gap Golf Course is. Then indirect potable reuse, where water is uh run through advanced treatment and put into into uh reservoirs. And then providing an out environmental buffer, which then becomes a raw water source. Um direct potable reuse, using that highly treated water and moving it directly into the distribution for customers. And then we've also been asked to look at environment, uh an alternative, essentially an I IPR concept or an indirect potable reuse concept where uh water could be uh provided to augment, to augment or in lieu of in-stream flow releases that would have to be made on on um the river systems. So what we're currently looking at for the non-potable reuse is the, is the Peacock Gap, which I understand is in design right now. Um, so the delivery of water to Peacock Gap Golf Course. And then the uh, the potential project of delivering water to San Quentin. Um obviously, these are seasonal demands and uh we've looked at, there was a whole, there's a whole other range of options available. They were relatively small. They, they're on the order of a hundred and fifty thousand acre feet per year. Whereas the two we decided to move forward with in terms of our evaluation is, is about three hundred acre feet per year, a little over three hundred acre feet per year. So these are not, not huge projects, but we wanted to make sure we're considering those in our, in our assessment. Uh from the indirect potable reuse, there's been a number of options that have been looked at in terms of uh different ways of doing small scale or systems. Uh we chose to, excuse me, to um target one of the larger systems in which we we taking water from uh Las Galinas. Um the South Marin and Central Marin and uh after running that through advanced water purification, moving that to Kent Lake for um subsequent um mixing in in that reservoir. And then it'd become a raw water source again. Uh this is roughly a seven MGD concept when when they're all combined. Uh then the in lieu for uh stream flow releases is very similar to that indirect potable reuse concept, except instead of putting it into the the reservoir directly, it could be released downstream of the reservoir and the water that the reservoir would have released for in-stream flow benefits could now be held in storage. Uh there are concerns with temperature associated with that. The water runs quite warm and and in-stream flow requirements would would require um ambient temperatures. Uh but those in-stream flow requirements are quite large, and so we wanted to look at this potential. And then finally, looking at uh DPR, Direct Potable Reuse. Uh CMSA current has a current study underway that we're, I think we have the draft report that that we've assessed here. Where they're looking at uh DPR either as a direct delivery or as a, what they call raw water augment augmentation into Bon Tempe Lake. Um, we're in the process of reviewing this, doing kind of subsequent analysis and and costing analysis on this one. Okay, I'm gonna save my voice and allow my colleague Jim Legere to talk about our D cell options. Are you still with us, Jim?
I am. I see we're at the hour here with some discussion of having a break. Uh or should we continue, Ben?
Oh, why don't we just put it to the board? If you'd like us to keep going, we're good with that. If you'd like to take a five-minute break and process what you've heard and and get going, we can do that.
I think we should take a break.
Okay, why why don't we plan on a five-minute break?
Okay.
Go ahead.
So as part of the water supply assessment, we're including four different desalination options. They're listed here, containerized or emergency desalination, the permanent Marin Regional Desalination Facility. Uh an option that looks at a part of the Bay Area Regional Desalination Project, we're calling East Bay. And then the Petaluma Brackish Regional Desalination. I'm really only going to talk about the first three. We really haven't spent much time uh looking into the Petaluma option at this point. So we'll we'll look at that uh going forward. Next slide, I'm starting off with the permanent option, which we're also calling the local ocean, bay desalination option. This really builds on the pilot testing that was done back in two thousand five, two thousand six. Uh where essentially that was published as part of evaluating a drought-proof source from Marin. This verified that we could treat bay water successfully. Identify the pre-treatment system that we would use along with the desalination reverse osmosis process and some post-treatment in order to make the water compatible with the distribution system as well as disinfection. Uh we introduce the demerolized stabilized water into the distribution system and blend that with treated reservoir water. The concentrate with the brine produced by the RO process would be blended with wastewater after from the CMSA outfall. Out to the uh, to the outfall, existing outfall. Just a schematic here, a brief schematic here that was taken from the two thousand six report. Uh we may or may not need what we call a two-pass RO system. Um we can, with newer membranes, better rejection, we can probably get by with one pass, but that's a detail we'll get into uh as we move into this option further. So the Emergency Desalination Facility Study, which was done last year uh in the height of the drought. We looked at two approaches. Initially, one was a barge-mounted facility. Um that would be obviously located offshore in the bay or a shore-based containerized facility. We really couldn't identify at that time a barge that would be available to utilize. There was also significant permitting issues associated with that, uh given the tight timeframe. So we moved on and focused on the containerized facility that would be installed uh to existing maintenance yard. Um where the full-scale facility was also to be cited. Uh so we looked at three bidders as part of a request for information uh that actually included twelve. Three bidders we we found were actually capable of providing equipment uh on an emergency basis. We engaged with two to get full proposals and really, at the end of the day, focused on one um called, company called Osmiflow that could be capable of delivering a three-point-six MGD uh system uh based upon the availability of their equipment, the footprint that it would occupy. More importantly, the fact that they had an integrated system that would really plug and play. And that could be, if brought on site, could be mobilized relatively quickly. You see a picture of one of those systems there. We would have two of these to make three-point-six MGD. Next slide. Moving on to the Bay Area Regional D cell project or called BARTUP. Initially conceived in two thousand three, there's been a number of studies done since then. The most recent going through two thousand fourteen, there was an extensive pilot study conducted as well as part of this program. Currently, the participating agencies are shiplisted here, CCWD, East Bay Mud, SFPUC, Valley Water and Zone Seven. As part of initial study, there were several plant sites identified. Those are shown uh on the map here. And initial capacity, which was originally proposed, was as much as sixty-five to seventy-nine gallons a day. At the time or currently, based upon what SFPUC has published in two thousand twenty-one, they're considering between five and fifteen MGD capacity. Uh of course, that's all in flux these days. Uh there really hasn't been much published as far as we can tell from the other agencies or what their demands might be. Next slide, I'm So the the more recent studies identified uh the preferred alternative for accessing the sound water to be salinated would be at the uh Contra Costa Mallard's little intake. So this is really a brackish water supply, kind of an ashwell supply. It would be desalinated and the water would be wheeled through the East Bay Much conveyance system. Uh as talked about earlier, for one of the other options. Uh the concept here is they could take as much as twenty-five million gallons a day from the slough and produce about twenty MGD of desalinated water. Given the fact that this is brackish water, you can get much better recovery of that water than you can with the seawater facility. But there was also discussions in this valuation about conjunctive operation, the desalination plant with the Los Felicares Reservoir. So if you ran the plant uh kind of at full capacity, you could put water that you don't need at a given year for drought purposes into the reservoir and then be able to access that water later on. So you'd have more capacity available to work with for the agencies. Obviously, for for the Marin Miss Water District to access the sounding water through the East Bay Mud System, they'd have to have a pipeline across the Richmond Center of San Rafael Bridge. And a number of agreements would have to be put in place to make that happen. Slide. So that's it for desalination. Uh Armin, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Uh appreciate that. The next, next group of options is about local uh storage augment Uh, appreciate that. The next, next group of options is about local uh, storage augmentation, surface storage augmentation. And uh, we're still in the process of doing some additional work on this, but we're reviewing the available water supply and storage characteristics of reservoirs. Looking at the regulatory approvals uh, for either augmenting storage or, or dredging to basically get more usable storage, looking at impacts and limitations and, and water right implications. Uh, we're not, we're not the first to look at this. It's been studied over the past fifty years almost. Um, starting back in nineteen seventy-two, so Marcelo put this nice graph together, which basically looked at all the water storage uh, storage studies over the, over the period, along with uh, water your precipitation. Just to give a sense for when they were, they were triggered. Um, a number of reservoirs were built, like Sulu Huli and Kent enlargement during the course of those studies. And the latest effort was the twenty forty water resources plan, which we're relying upon as kind of our starting data set, but also going back all the way to these nineteen seventies reports to look at what their, their yield numbers were.
I think there's a question, Director Bragman. Armin, um, have you guys looked at the North Marin uh, supply augmentation presentation? Um, they analyze spillway gates at uh, Stafford. And um, it's a pretty, it's pretty interesting. Uh, it's uh, it, the financial feasibility is is orders of magnitude less than um, excavation. And you know, the technical requirements seem quite uh, conventional. I mean, I know there's some regulatory hurdles that we would need to address. But it seems to me that it provides the augmentation with flexibility, which might be useful, given the pattern of of the A R pattern that we, that you guys discussed earlier of sort of the feast or famine of A R. So they, they did a recent update. They're actually meeting tonight at the same time we are to, to look it over, but um, I'd like to send that to Ben um, and have him circulate it. It's an updated study on spillway gates that I think should be included in our surface storage augmentation um, study.
Yeah, thanks for that comment, Director Bragman. Uh, yeah, we are aware of that study and um, Drew McIntyre, the G M, has provided an early version of some, some of those results, so that we will be looking at similar efforts here for the, the storage augmentation, so it won't not. Those were essentially rubber dams on the top of, on the top of dams to enlarge, you know, three to five feet or so. So we'll be looking at that in addition to some of these larger scale augmentation, so.
I don't think it's just rubber, rubber dams. You know, I think there, there's some manufacturers that manufacture sluice gates that seem quite capable of uh, being implemented in our system. But you know, you guys have to take a look at the technical capabilities.
Thank, thank you. We, we will. We'll make sure we get copy of the latest report that North Marin's conducting as well.
Thank you.
Uh, we've started doing uh, kind of cycling back on the, the twenty forty, the analysis in the Water Research Plan twenty forty. They did come up with some recommendations or suggestions in terms of augmentation, uh, storage augmentation at Sula Huli. Um, and dredging at Nacasio, improving the usable storage through pumping improvements at Nacasio. And then some smaller scale uh, potential areas of, of storage, of storage in, in the gravel quarry. And, and then local groundwater storage. I think the latter, the latter two on this slide will be relatively um, small, small scale. Um, and then we, we've been looking at kind of this issue of where would additional storage capacity make, make value? We, we looked at each of the reservoirs and looked at their storage capacity to the average inflow. Um, so essentially, anything that's greater than one, the storage capacity um, can hold essentially um, entire year's inflow. So there's substantial storage there. Anything that's substantially lower than one is, is a reservoir that if you were to enlarge would create some new yield because the supply is, is ample and the storage capacity is relatively small. So I think uh, you know, the definitely point, if you kind of exclude Phoenix and Lagunitas, relatively small lakes, but if you look at Sula Huli and, and maybe Alpine Kent is, is combined. So Sula Huli and Nacasio tend to be the ones that we would uh, focus on, and that's probably why the, the one, the twenty forty plan also focused on them. Uh, that we're not, we're not complete with this analysis. We're just beginning it, so um, would love to hear some additional thoughts, Director Bragman. I like your, your comments on the, on kind of the spillway augmentation efforts. Um, so that, we're, we're kind of under, underway here and exploring these options. Relying on past studies and then trying to move a few items forward. Uh, that kind of wraps up the big water supply options. We also have kind of a bucket category for, for innovative um, concepts. Uh, we'll be looking at these a little bit further, but we've not done a deep dive on them yet. Things like fog capture, cloud seeding, watershed management, which may generate additional um, supply benefits. Um, but don't fall within those other categories. Okay, the, the last grouping in this water management alternative is about demand management. So everything we've talked about in this section has been about how do you generate supply or move water more efficiently? The demand management piece is looking about how do we explore the other side of the ledger and, and uh, improve drought resiliency through demand management. Uh, you've got a really um, top notch water conservation program uh, within your, your district. So we want to build off, off of those, look at enhanced programs for, for non-functional turf leaf detection. And then how do we integrate water conservation into drought savings? So just a, a couple of slides to set the stage for this, and this will be the focus of our first May workshop with you, with the board. We'll talk about this in more, more detail. But this is looking at the, the trends from nineteen ninety-five through last year in terms of system-wide G P C D in the, the blue, the upper line. Um, and then residential G P C D in the purple line, the smaller, the lower levels. And then population growth over that same time period. Um, so when we look at, kind of look at the overall trends, we wanted to pull up a couple of items out of here to highlight. First is, you see a lot of variability in, in terms of the G P C D. And much of that is triggered by kind of events that happen, whether they're drought events or economic. Um, uh, great recession events in two thousand eight, two thousand nine that triggered it. Um, so you can see the dips, the really rapid dips tend to be kind of event-based, very abrupt drought events or economic events. And we see on the order of fifteen to twenty-five percent reductions over those, during those critical events. But if you kind of look for the long-term trend, and we kind of just, we've, we're just starting our analysis on this, but if you look at the long-term trend, we're seeing kind of the peaks. Every recovery from one of those periods um, came back not to the same level, but lower than the, than the previous peak. And if we just look at those that kind of what we're calling a normal year trend, we're seeing something on the order of of half to one percent per year reduction in the normal year demand. And that's the result of, of conservation ethic, of public awareness, of, of changing kind of societal values and um, the effect of fixtures and, and land use changes that are happening kind of independent of the drought periods. So what we're trying to uh, develop further now is an approach where we would look at kind of what is the normal year? Excuse me, what is the normal year um, water use efficiency? And then what levels we've defined here, kind of level zero would be our normal year efficiency and, and to um, Director Kohler's question earlier, this is what we likely consider within our scenarios. What is that um, level zero? And then with, during drought periods, we'd be looking at level, what we're calling level one, level two, level three, which are really more aggressive or larger investments in water conservation programs to get to a higher wider water savings in response to drought. Uh, these could be aligned with the water shortage contingency plans, stages one through six. And the, your water conservation program invent um, investments over time. So we're looking at the building out essentially a, a level zero, which would be part of our scenarios and our level one, two and three, which would be our drought response. Um, characterization for demand management.
So just, just so that I understand, so is level zero the current status quo? Or is that something else? Or is that, because I think part of what some of us are looking for in the scenario planning is different scenarios with what you're not, what I, and I think it's a good way to do this um, with level zero, because that, that could be any number of levels. I mean, our, our investments in these, you know, uh, you know, I, I, I agree that the program is great. Um, it's not. I mean, certainly there are um, there are certainly higher levels of investment we can make. I think it's a, I think we're investing less than a one percent of our, our budget right now. So could, could you help us understand what you mean by level zero, by level zero?
Yeah, so, so if we go back to just kind of the trend line here, so if we look at recent trends have shown that we have a reduction in this normal year, and that, that would be kind of the level zero. But we know moving out to the future, that may not be the exact trend in the future, so we would like to explore different ranges of what that trend would look like if we move to the right side of the page into the future. So that will be part of our scenarios. We've not yet kind of set what the bounds are, but we will and want to share that with you in the May, the May discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so that's us. So you can think of the dash line as our level zero. And everything with the red arrows is our drought response, where we're actually gonna look at what types of drought management measures could be implemented.
Okay, thanks.
And, and Armin, I'm assuming that, that like, it's not just in a normal year that you would see level zero. It'd be any year other than a dry year.
Yeah, that's why it was in quotes, normal. It's basically a non-drought year, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah. Actually, I hate the term normal, so.
There's no such thing.
Yeah, there's no such thing. It's uh, such a bureaucratic way to describe conditions that you don't understand. Yeah, so, but yeah, that'd be kind of our baseline condition, and then when we hit drought, we'd be looking at what different levels of investment, and we want to compare the levels of investment you might make in these drought responses to the levels of investment we would make in water supply, alternative supplemental supply as well. So we want to put them on kind of the same, the same playing field when we do our evaluation. Okay, I'm gonna pa- um, pause there. That, that wraps up kind of our overview of the water management uh, options, both the supply and the demand. And we're gonna, heading into kind of a recap of the goals discussion that you had seen previously, and we can maybe move through that fairly quickly.
Why don't we go ahead and have questions here, Armin?
Okay.
Can I ask a question, Armin, about when, when you, when you look at these stage one, these different stages? Are you assuming that those kick in at a certain point in the year? So you know, I, I think it, I'll ask the leading question, which is it makes a big difference whether you initiate uh, reductions in April versus in June. I mean, every, the sooner you do it, of course, the, the longer the benefit of that reduction. Yeah, how does your modeling address the implementation of these different stages i- i- over the course of a water year?
Yeah, so right now, the stages one through six are really your, your water shortage contingency plans, and they have uh, Paul on, well, call on you if I get it wrong, but Paul Selye, but they're all based on, on uh, storage levels or projected storage levels, I believe. Am I getting that right, Paul?
Yeah, that, that's right, Armin. Um, there is one, I think, that, that takes a kind of a look at, at rainfall. May- maybe one of the early stages, just, you know, if it's been a dry year.
But to, to your, your question of where we go with this, with this study, I think we'd like to be a little bit more proactive, so we've started to explore what is the earliest forecast point that we could know we are in or heading towards a drought? And that would be, that would be a, a new start point for when you might trigger conservation. It may be that you have, you invest in conservation and you didn't need it because you got bailed out by a really nice storm. But that may be a, a, an investment you would be willing to make regardless. It, it gives you reliability. So we're, we're trying to evaluate, kind of going back to the very first slide where we're talking about atmospheric river prediction, and if we want to get all the way up there, can we predict, can we get to the prediction stage so we can start to trigger those actions earlier rather than kind of a, uh, a reactionary response to when you already see it in the reservoir? But we're not, we're not there yet. We're still working through that.
I feel that you will, that's, I, I'm so glad to hear you talk about this. Uh, so this is, your modeling though will show uh, will you be able to show scenarios wherein we could, where if we make decisions prior to storage levels that are driven by hydrology, how demand management might look differently?
Yeah, we will, and then we'll show the risk of, of maybe over-investing early if, or not investing early enough, yeah.
Uh, Aron, what does the increasing regulation mean? Are you talking about ordinances?
Yeah, um, yeah, it's, it's just a general arrow to describe it. As we go from level one to level three, we have a higher requirement to get to, to conservation, and some of that could be um, mandatory use reductions. It could be a higher level of investment, but now you're pushing, you're not getting the same response. And also kind of an increasing uncertainty that we might actually see the response that we anticipate. Because we're asking.
So it's more. Primarily from us, you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Jack, any thoughts? Uh-oh. How about you, Larry?
Sorry, I know I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, how about you, Larry?
Um, I've got a few, but I'll try to narrow it down. There are some um, variables that um, I think need to be added to our calculation, our calculus as far as Sonoma. Um, and that has to do with the dams on the Eel River, which are in flux right now. So depending on the outcome of the litigation, which I'm sure is in the offing, um, that will, that may affect Sonoma's supply. It may affect Sonoma's um, interest in shared projects such as the Pedaluma D cell or the groundwater storage uh, bank. Um, are you guys gonna be taking a look at the situation up with Potter Valley, Scott Dam, Coyote Dam and, and all the interconnections that are gonna play into this?
Yeah, great, great question, uh, Director Bragman. Yeah, as part of the resilient, the regional water supply resilience study that we're helping uh, Sonoma Water and Marin conduct right now, we are starting to explore those Potter Valley project uncertainties as well as part of our scenario, resiliency scenarios. So we anticipate to bring some of those scenarios directly into this Marin assessment as part of our upfront scenarios, those things that we can't control.
Okay, and then one other thing that struck me when we were talking of, you guys were talking about I P R, D P R here in Marin. Um, I didn't see mention of it in Sonoma. I know uh, Santa Rosa is sending most of its wastewater good amount up to Calpine, which, you know, very ingenious reuse of that water. And I'm wondering um, whether there's been any consideration of doing I, I P R um, with the facility in Sonoma where we would store the treated water uh, in groundwater basins and sort of um, give it a rest before it was recirculated into the system. So any consideration of indirect potable reuse up in Sonoma, tying it into the shared groundwater resources.
Uh, that, that's a great. advice. We've not, we were not yet planning to do that. So we will take that into consideration and and try to move that into our assessment. Currently, we are only envisioning kind of winter water being put into the groundwater, not recycled water.
Yeah.
Reused water.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a a scenario that might be worth taking a look at. And uh, you know, the other one that I've been uh, pretty fond of, as you may have picked up, is is the whole spillway gate concept.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. We'll certainly take those into account.
Okay.
I have a couple.
Oh, okay, sure.
Um, going back to um the uh, the regional water ground bank. I mean, you let me just say, first of all, this is a a very comprehensive presentation. I think you guys have done an excellent job of taking all of that planning work from the 2040 study, updating it. You know, with these additional alternatives. And I've always been very interested in the groundwater bank, especially since um, you know, as was discussed earlier. Um, you know, given climate change and and all of the trends you're talking about being able to bank underground um, would really be an an excellent option, you know, going forward, just, you know, looking at what the future holds. So um you know, what what is your sense? I think I may have, and I apologize if I missed this because you guys were going fast, but um there's been a lot of conversation about this, you know, as far as I can tell for the last five or six years, and I understand it's still preliminary. But if you've got any sense about timing on that, it it feels like one of these options that keeps getting discussed, not just here, but in Sonoma, every time somebody does a study. And um, you know, if you just have some initial sense about, you know, are we looking three years, five years, 10 years, or or do you just need more time to get a sense of that?
I think there there's beginning active discussion on framing out the concept um, in terms of total potential storage. What are the agreements that might be needed in order to do that? How you might do the in lieu? In lieu component rather than the direct the component. There's lots of discussion on it. I would say it's it's very much at the conceptual stage. So in terms of timing, I would say it's not, it's not a a one to two year option for sure.
So more in that five to 10 year range, you think?
Yeah, maybe, maybe three, four, but
Okay.
I would, I would push out towards the five year. I think the agreement part, the making the bank work physically, I don't think is the limiting factor. It's how do you get all the agreements of the the parties, the GSPs and and the the non overlying parties to to agree. So I think.
Yeah, no, I I completely appreciate the the legal and sort of institutional infrastructure complexities. No, no question about it. It's just that, like I say, it's been discussed for a long time and it sounds like it's finally getting some some legs. And I think many of the options you've got here are multi-year options. I don't think anything is happening. You know, other than the demand reduction pieces, and even those will take time. But um, but everything seems to be on on a bit of a trajectory. Is that fair?
Yep, I think that's, yeah, that's fair. And you know, in some other studies, we've looked at what is the willingness to to move a project like if if your 2022 and 2023 were as bad as 2020 and 2021. Right? That changes changes the willingness to move projects. So if you took that kind of very optimistic view in terms of accelerating a project, how fast could it be implemented?
Yeah.
I think a number of them are really long range projects, but given the right political will might become midterm projects as opposed to long term projects.
Yeah, I I I agree with that. Thanks.
Could I?
As my.
Go ahead, Larry.
I was just going to say, it it seems that a lot of these approaches are interactive, so demand reduction affects supply augmentation. And you know, one of the things that's come up in our prior discussions is you know, when when do we implement drought response? Because it seems like long term, we're probably in an intermittent drought. And a concern of mine is, you know, when, when do we implement the triggers for drought response? Our current ordinances at 30,000 acre feet which made it very tight for us uh in 2021. And it seems like we should be moving those triggers up to a higher level level of storage to give us and our residents, you know, more time to implement demand reduction. So I don't know if you're going to be getting into that, but that's something I think our board may be taking up in the near future. And I think your input would be, you know, greatly appreciated in that in that regard on on these drought response triggers.
Yeah, I think that's actually key, key, especially in a system like yours where it's very uh uh reactive, I'd say very responsive to to hydrology. Then the predictive getting all the way up to predictive capability, can you use sea surface temperatures and forecast to to say, okay, we're we're in a La Nina year like we are now, and it's a PDO cycle that's favoring drought conditions. Um, so that's kind of the earliest piece. And then you kind of measure the actual precipitation in the forecast with seasonal forecasting it. And then you get to kind of runoff and 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 lake levels. And by then I think you're already you're kind of moving into a reactionary phase. It's not quite there. So yeah, that we're really keen to go as far up in the predictive stage as we can and offer up some recommendations on when you might move the triggers earlier in the process.
Yeah, Ar- Armin, just for clarification, what what did you mean by by PDO? You just share.
Yeah, the Pacific Decadal Oscillation, it think of it as like a a long range El Nino. And so, you know, El Nino Southern Oscillation. So the cooling and warming of the oceans on a longer time scale than annual.
Ben, I I I think because we made an in-depth evaluation of this before Larry Bragman joined the board. Could you go back and take a look at the staff report? And perhaps circulate it to the board and to Jacobs um, on what the look was at that time with respect to the triggers? Because I I I had the same skepticism and after we did the in-depth dive, I was satisfied that uh, at least looking backwards, they were fine. Uh, looking forward, uh, we have have a different deal, but going backwards, they seem to work when they need it to work.
Yeah. But and and I think that's a great idea. It's just, it seems like our data is changing, our temperatures are changing, and we may want to adjust
Sure.
the triggers accordingly. So.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
I I agree with that, too. Can I ask one last question? I know we we want to move on, but um you you know, I think some of these other options, we just, we really haven't revisited in detail for a while. So, Armin, can you just talk a little bit? Um, maybe go back to that direct potable reuse slide because that's the other option. I mean, not the only one. We've got a lot of of, you know, very interesting options here, but but DPR really interests me. My understanding is that um the timeline on this has moved up considerably, right? So this is one that's well beyond the talking stage. And as you mentioned, there's a study. Um, do you see this um, being um, available? You know, more more quickly, I, you know, I definitely have had a lot of constituent interest in this. And I've also, I haven't seen, I just haven't had a chance to review it, but my understanding is that the initial cost analyses, the numbers for this are coming way, way down. Is that resonating with you?
Yeah, and I I must admit, I I'll have to talk with my colleague, who's here on who's been reviewing that study.
Okay.
And I know that study's been.
Yeah, this usual. Um, so the cost has been coming down. Um, we were just doing the um water reuse, um, a water research foundation study and the I'm trying to establish the cost um per acre foot on for a DPR versus IPR. And you know, of course, if you have yet larger scale system, you um, your cost is going to go down. But um, in general, it seems to be the cost curve um, as of now is a little bit um downwards than how in the other studies started going popping up back in like a 2014-ish um, back then um, compared to that time. And now the cost seems to be slightly coming down. I think yeah. Public perception, public outreach in that component may still um, take a lot of time. Once it gets to actual implementation. So the uh, Corolla is a updating more, uh, just a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago. And that was talking about uh, 11 years to uh, implementation that is for the essential Marines um treated water augmentation directly going into the uh, distribution system. So um, we included this map uh, showing the water going into the um Potempe uh, lake. On the basis that um, probably going into the raw water augmentation is a little bit more palatable than going straight into the distribution system. So um, uh, the um water strategy 2040 um report only talked about the individual CMSA versus the Alaska in us um, versus um South Marine DPR options, but um, we'd like to include the option that is similar to regional IP um, IPR, but more um, elaborate um, DPR with the uh, all three plants are collaborating. So that's the option we are planning to look at.
Okay. And then it it may be a bit available publicly, but can I ask whoever these the appropriate person, I think the, I think it would be great to circulate the study to the extent that it's public to the uh, to the board, because I've been hearing quite a lot about it. And it it does seem like a very exciting option, even if it is 11 years out. I mean, you know, that's a, that's a fairly midterm range for us. And so I think that makes this a very live possibility.
Yeah, we'll do that, Director Paul. So, Armin.
I agree with the comment completely um, about putting in the lake as opposed to putting it into pipes. Keep in mind that the water is maybe 10 degrees centigrade warmer than our normal water, maybe even warmer than that. And it it will give you a very identifiable uh, presence because of the temperature change. That's an issue that needs to be addressed is what to do about the temperature that it's the sewage is warmer and then when you treat it gets warmer than that. So um, it gets a little tricky. And and the 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 regs are haven't changed. It's it's still, I think, guys, December 23 is the, I think they're not going to pick that schedule up beyond that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, for what we're talking about, Larry, I mean, that's basically tomorrow. I mean, that's.
Well, sort of. I mean, you what you're assuming is what will happen. You know, you you're assuming that it's a green light to go forward.
Um, I'm not making any assumption. I'm saying it's a much more real possibility. And we shouldn't be taking things off the table because they're going to take some time. Almost everything here is going to take a lot of time.
I I don't disagree with that, but we don't know what the outcome of the study in December 23 is going to be in terms of redundancy. There's a lot of assumptions. Um, my latest conversation with George Bonavus about this subject is that it will go forward in December 23, in his opinion. But the degree of redundancy and the uh, log removals required, they're talking like 10 to the 12th. So that's a lot of treatment. So um, you know, i- i- it's going to be very pricey. Uh, and and it and it's like, why fight the fight? You know, it's easier to go with IPR. And I I think augmenting the the reservoirs makes perfect sense. Um, you know, there are some algal growth issues and things like that can come along with it. But it's just an easier approach. You get the same benefit. And you've got to treat to that level anyway. You know, you'd still have to have a water treatment plant in between the sewage and the treated sewage and the drinking water. So you might as well send it to the reservoir and then treat it through the regular plants.
Yeah, I would, sorry, I would agree completely. In the sense that the regarding place for surface water augmentation. Obviously, there's projects going forward. And you're right, the amount of treatment required is a lot less than doing raw augmentation. Because you don't need ozone and BAC or whatever ends up being the case. To your point, you know, the co- uh, Dr. Director Koller. Yes, the costs have come down, but there's also been some differences in costs going up on some of the treatment processes that we're dealing with. Not just because of COVID, but because of the chemicals used to manufacture membranes, for example, and the competition with the battery market. So there's a lot of factors at play here that unless you understand the details, um, be careful when you think the costs are going to come down across the board because that may not be the case.
Just to be clear, I'm not advocating for any of these options necessarily. It's just, this is one that seems to be coming up, the studies down the road. So I I certainly don't disagree with anybody saying that we should be looking seriously at IPR. Of course, we should. Um, it's just you know, in the in the in the world of looking forward, right? We want to be using all of our water resources. We want to be moving from that, you know, more it, um, you know, more 20th century way of thinking about, you know, uh, these resources as waste and more about thinking of them as assets, right? So I just think it's an exciting development and we shouldn't be too quick to uh, to take it off the table. So you know, I'm I'm certainly open to whatever the scenario planning is is telling us, particularly when it comes to cost.
Well, and I think just to round out the discussion, we're gonna, we're gonna look at all of those options. So DPR, IPR, we'll look at different approaches for DPR as well. So everything's on the table at this point and everything will be evaluated. And then once we see the results, we'll talk about whether they all move forward or or not. So.
One other question, if I could, which is you know, there's a lot of interesting um possible projects on on the table right now. One thing we haven't talked about is the carbon footprint of the projects. And I'm wondering if in the course of your evaluation, you're going to give us some data on the carbon footprint of these approaches.
Great, great question. It is exactly where I was just going to head with the evaluation criteria. Uh, Ben, you do you think we should skip over? I was going to skip past the goals and go straight to the.
Why don't we do that? They've seen the goals and then we can do a time check. We do need to leave some time for public comments as well. Um, so that sounds like a good approach.
The Director Bragman, if I can, just if I could address that in just a moment as we get there, we're almost there, I think. So let me um appreciate your patience on this. So just, I'll just, um, I'll give the two slide version on the goals for for today. Um, our team's been looking at your, some of your board policies and handbooks. We looked at your 2021 policy, the handbook, we looked at your draft resolution on climate change and water resiliency. Uh, we looked at what other districts have said in terms of of their overall goals. Um, East Bay Mud, San Diego, uh, Denver Water, we did a sampling of of other kind of large innovative districts, I would say. Um, and then we've developed draft goals on on these four areas of supply, uh, water quality, sustainability, environmental, economic and financial. Uh, and I think Paul has shared these these broad statements with you on a number of of occasions. So I'm going to just stop here that we've kind of set these broad goal statements. We are working to define specific actions and measurable um, metrics associated with them for water supply, getting um, resiliency and reliability, ensuring that high quality water um is produced, um, protecting, enhancing the biodiversity, the watershed and environment. And then maintaining the district's infrastructure and operations in a cost effective manner. So kind of looking at it at kind of this quote, almost like a triple bottom line or a sustainability approach. And if I just skip past those and go straight to the evaluation process.
Armin, if I can, th- there was something I just wanted to note in terms of the supply options that we reviewed is, and maybe it's just implied in the board appreciates it that tonight what one thing we're looking for is if there were any supply options that the board would like to see that weren't captured. And maybe that was it wasn't stated explicitly, but self evident. So um, what you saw tonight are the options that are going to be analyzed in some detail and discussed and brought back. So whether it's tonight or in the next week or so, you know, something comes to mind that you to see analyzed in context of these options that wasn't um, you know, the sooner the better in terms of workflow and the schedule.
Yeah, thanks, Ben, for that. Not hearing any at the moment, so everyone's stewing new ideas right now, I'm assuming. Well, in terms of the options, the alternatives that we will eventually generate, those that we talked about today and any new ones that come up. We'll be evaluating all against a set of criteria. And those are linked to the the goals that that we just quickly flashed up there. Uh, kind of the first one will be performance related criteria. So how essentially, how well does it achieve? So how essentially, how well does it achieve the resiliency and reliability goals, the water supply goals? And then we'll have a suite of additional evaluation criteria and we have a draft list that's shown here where we'll be looking at cost, timing. So how long would it cost essentially capital and O and M costs associated with it? Timing, how quickly could a project be actually functional and operational, providing the the supply or the demand reduction benefits? Environmental impacts, feasibility, like how mature is the concept? Energy, so getting to the carbon footprint comment. We will typically go to the energy level, Director Bragman, to look at the energy footprint associated with each of the options. When we get to the carbon side of it, a lot of that depends on how it will be sourced in terms of what energy is providing that or what type of sources providing that energy. So if the if the grid is all solar, then it's it's a green. So we tend to kind of go to the energy piece and we can add the carbon piece on top of it using kind of simplified grid, grid level assessments. So, you know, what's the makeup of the grid in terms of gas and natural gas versus hydro versus solar? So that that's how we would intend to approach that. So everyone would have a sense of energy footprint. And if there's a desire to do that, we could go from energy to carbon easily.
Do you want to let you get all the?
I think that's a great idea.
Do you want, do you want to get all the way through this or do you want some comments on the evaluation process now? Because this is a good start, but just a couple of other things jumped to mind. But I, again, I'm mindful of time and I don't want to get ahead of where you're at.
Now, we're, we're pretty close to wrapping up. So happy that, yeah, just on this list here, legal permitting, so just the challenges there. We want to look at some socioeconomic aspects. A lot of these will be qualitative. The first two will be quantitative measurements, so cost and timing. The remainder of them will be kind of scales of one to five ratings that will develop. The energy one will actually be quantitative as well. The Director Kohler, happy to take your comment if you'd like to offer it now.
Well, I mean, I, I think we all need a little bit of time to absorb this, so I'm glad there's going to be these more detailed conversations. But what comes up immediately on costs, so I'm delighted to see it at the top of the list, is I would almost, you know, frame that as cost slash affordability. Those are related, but they're not exactly the same. There's the cost of the district, but at the end of the day, you know, we're not a private company. Our costs really are all about the impact on rates and our consumers. So I think, I think to be explicit that this is about affordability, I think is important as an evaluation criteria, or at least for the board to consider. And I'm a little surprised, just given the conversations I'm seeing nationally and across the West, you don't have equity as an evaluation criteria. Was that considered?
Yeah, kind of tied to the social one. The second from the bottom is where we would envision bringing in the equity aspects. So our impacts disproportionately affecting certain communities or benefits equally spread out throughout the communities. That's where we would bring that in.
Okay, we may want to be, in fact, I, I'm going to recommend to the board that we discuss that, but I think we should be more explicit about it, particularly in light of where federal funding is going for these kinds of initiatives. As you all may know, 40% of all of the federal money now available for water supply infrastructure is within the Justice 40 program and must be directed towards, you know, addressing environmental justice disadvantaged communities and demonstrating, you know, positive, not just social benefits, but specifically equity benefits. So since we're right at the beginning of this process, I think we should have a more intentional conversation about about that, rather than just assuming people know that social means that. So what do people think about that?
I think it's an excellent idea. It should, it should be called out going forward.
Okay.
It's kind of, yeah, it's, it's we have a disparity here in Marin County for sure.
Yeah, it's very, it's significant. And as we know from Prop 13, I mean, you know, Prop 218, everybody will be bearing these costs, not just the affluent. So we just need to be, I think particularly mindful. My other thought, Armin, on this is that on the timing, I think we all agree that timing should definitely be a criteria, but I wonder if, and this isn't a criticism, you know, it's a great slide. But I wonder if we can unpack that because I don't know that we want to simply go with projects that can be done quickly. I mean, we do, right? There are things we want to do quickly that has its own benefit, obviously, particularly if we're heading in, as I think most of us think we are to another year of drought. But there's also benefit, given the scale of this, to be thinking about layering timing, right? So it may be that projects that are likely to take more time, whether it's IPR or, you know, something else, you know, you know what I mean, to be like, thinking about. And and this really goes to my, I don't know if this is another criteria, but what I'm, what I'm interested in here is exploring redundancy as an evaluation criteria. I think for a lot of us, we've come to the conclusion that there's not a silver bullet, right? There's not going to be one answer. There's going to be multiple answers and our security and our climate resilience is going to depend on silver buckshot rather than a silver bullet, right? And that means being able to bring different kinds of projects in over time. There may be some things we can do super fast. There may be some things that are more medium term and, you know, and so on. But I think what's going to be important is that ability to, you know, to really look over a timeframe at what's going to give the rate payers the greatest level of water supply security in the context of the affordability and equity and other things we're talking about. Does that, does that resonate with you, Armin? Does that make sense?
Great, great comment. And that's exactly where we're heading in, in terms of portfolios. So when we get to portfolios, that's exactly what we're looking at is what, what buys down near term risk? What buys down long term risk? How do we have a mix of projects that allows you to, because we're going to be looking at so many different futures plausible and they're all plausible.
Right.
That we need, we need a combination of of options available. So the timing won't be a criteria in and of itself. It'll be part of the portfolio process that we look at. So we will look at each project and how, how long it will take. But when we get to our recommendation and the roadmap, it won't be excluding projects just because they have a longer term time horizon. They just may be providing a future drought benefit as opposed to a 2023 drought benefit.
Okay, then I'm just going to suggest you may want to, somehow we frame this as bringing together these concepts of timing and redundancy. Just, just a thought.
Yeah, good comment. Thank you.
Sure.
I think.
Glad money.
So a couple of other thoughts, which may be embedded in some of the things that you've got here. You know, in terms of cost, I think that it, that, that cost per yield, you know, in terms of, you know, what is it cost for us to generate a certain amount of water? I think it gives us, you know, I, I would imagine this is already on your minds that, you know, understanding what is the most cost effective way of generating additional water supply will, again, allow people, I think, in the community to, to see a comparison of options. Something else that I'm not sure if you've got embedded in here is reliability in the face of climate change. Because some options, I think, our water supply options into the future have differing strengths and weaknesses based on our climate projections that you've done a great job at presenting. So I think having, having as part of the criteria and maybe it's embedded or it's a new one that looks at reliability and climate resilience. I think that would be really helpful. A third, a third element, I think, and I think of it as kind of a synergies. And I think to some degree, Director Kohler was talking about this is some of the, some of these projects may be more feasible because they're synergies with other, with other projects or they're synergies with other important benefits which make a project more feasible. So the, the, the very aspect that there's so much funding that is actually committed to, to serving multiple purposes, particularly disadvantaged communities. That's a synergy I look at, I would look at with a, of a particular project type. But other projects, you know, again, I think you talked about a portfolio and I imagine you were thinking that, that some of these projects will, will play well together and others might not. So DPR and recycled water may be in direct conflict, for example. So I think that being able to, to highlight that would be an important piece of, of evaluating these different project types. And, and you know, maybe another one, just going back to costs. And again, Director Kohler's comment, there's, there are certain project types which are more have a greater chance at acquiring or accessing public funds to help cover. And so I think that understanding which ones have a greater fundability with, with, with grants or with public, with state or federal funding would be really helpful as well.
I don't think that the DPR and recycled water would be in conflict money. I think one is just a logical extension of the other. But I, I think the one thing that's missing here, at least in the list I see, is resilience. I think it deserves to be listed as one of the evaluation criteria. And I ran across a definition the other day, which I thought was quite interesting, and it was this. Resilience is the ability to pivot again and again for whatever happens next. And I think that's really the key to this, you know, we have an opportunity to take a shot at the target. We have to hit the target in our evaluation. Failure here is, is quite consequential in, in many ways. So we have to be sure that we've got something that is going to stand up for the future. And I don't know what horizon that is. That kind of needs to be ground into this too. Are we looking for 10 years or 20 years or 50 years or 1,000 years, you know, whatever the number is? How far out are we going to go to, to? I'll use the term loosely, guarantee the water supply. Because that's going to really come down to, you know, what is appropriate for the cost now? And what is the, the, what is the cost if you don't do it now, you know, down the road? So that kind of needs to get ground in there, at least some kind of a horizon. And I don't know, Armon, if you've got a feel for that, if, if we're looking 10 years or 40 years or we're going to use the urban water management plan goals or what we're going to do here. But that's kind of needs to be ground into this, I think, as some kind of a, of a time horizon.
Yeah, we're, we're still having conversations about that. My, my view is we're looking at multiple decades on the order of 50 years. Because if you're going to make an investment of the, the size, some of these options, they're going to be around for quite a long time. But just because we have a long time horizon wouldn't mean that we're not looking at the very immediate future. So you'd be looking at kind of two phases, a very immediate risk and then a longer term risk and developing options that would help you across both of those. But we haven't, we haven't settled on that time, the planning horizon yet.
In addition, planning horizon, I think Larry's definition of redundancy is good. It's similar to ones that that I've used. I think Larry, and I think we're on the same page. I think that's what I was getting at with this concept of redundancy, right?
I agree. I agree. Yep, yep. Yeah, I mean, whatever we come up with has to stand the test of time. And that's going to be varieties of weather, varieties of usage, demand changes, conservation improvements, all those kind of things. We've got to have a package that is, you know, pretty flexible here in, in, even though it's got hard piping and things like that. It's got to be looking to the future for something that works today and in the future.
Yeah, and I also just, you know, cherry on top is given the unpredictability of our planning horizon, you know, I think we do need to have flexible options. Again, it just seems like all the options are interactive with one another. Supply is interactive with demand, demand affects supply. So, and, and climate is going to affect what capital projects, what options are going to actually work going forward, depending on, on the source and, and the technology used. So there's a lot of moving parts that we're going to have to cover here.
Yeah, that's exactly right, Larry. And, you know, it, we've been stuck in what I call the Roman model since the Romans were around. So for the last 2,000 years, basically, we've used, when Julius Caesar was Caesar, Rome had seven aqueducts supplying its water. And, you know, they just basically went to a new watershed as they needed to go each time. They didn't worry about conservation. They worried about flushing the, the waste out of the system, basically into the Tiber. And that's all they worried about. Just run the water, flush it out, get rid of it. It's somebody else's problem downstream. So we've got to do a more sophisticated approach that doesn't just involve bringing new water in. It does to the extent that we need new water, but it can't be the sole thing we're depending on here. It's got to be a package that integrates itself. And I agree completely with the synergy discussion as well as the antagonistic discussion. Those are critical aspects of these projects. And you can, you know, your term social is an interesting one. You could also add politics to this or practicality or a lot of different things. But I think resiliency, redundancy has to be added to this because I think that's really the, 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 the measure of the quality of the final product.
Great, great comments. Just maybe one response to that. I agree with everything that was said, first off, the approach where we would head, we tend to think of options as kind of what are robust options and which ones might give us great value, independent of which future is, actually occurs. So those are kind of our robust options. And then we tend to think of other ones being kind of contingent options. So maybe some options only provide value if you hit a certain type of future condition. And if that is the one that's selected, then you have to have really good monitoring and trigger points for when that particular option would be developed. And a portfolio generally would include both those robust options and, and some contingent options.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Jack, anything you want to add?
I just actually, I'm sure that I will develop questions on all of this, but I did want to make a comment. I've been on the board through a lot of studies that have been done over the years. I want to congratulate the team on this. I am very encouraged by this. This is perhaps the most serious start. And I understand it's only a start, but it's very, very encouraging and it's, it's quite serious. So thank you for the effort and brain work you got going into this.
Excellent comment, Jack. And for those folks that are concerned about our doing studies, keep in mind in the engineering business that this is the lowest cost thing you can do. This is the pure definition of measure twice, cut once. We want to make sure that we go in the right direction the first time and we have a successful path in front of us. So the, the investment in a study of this type is basically de minimis in the, the long term solution. But it's, it's essential to have a roadmap and that's what's going to come out of this study. Okay, Ben, okay, that's fine.
I think, can I, unless there's more comments, I was going to wrap up. So just to let you know where we're, we're at, we're in this process of kind of fully developing our scenarios, which we'll talk about. The decision support model that Marcelo presented is still a bit in work. So we hope in the next few weeks, we're going to get that operational where we're comfortable. These water supply alternatives are being flushed out by our team right now. They're developing conceptual alignments, cost and, and other aspects. And then we're working to fully flesh out the demand approach, which we'll talk with the board about in, in May. So the, just a reminder, these are what we're suggesting as focus areas for the May sessions, demand management, and then, and then followed by the drought scenarios and baseline reliability. So that kind of sets up the, the baseline, what, what if we do nothing? What, what's our risk? And then June focuses about, focuses on how do we address that risk? So water supply alternatives and the evaluation process.
And I presume by June we'll get into cost issues.
Yes, yeah.
So I, I think the, the question that I have, and I, I don't want to belabor it because we have to get to public comment, but you know, and as I've said all throughout, this has been a great presentation. I can tell you guys are. You know, and as I've said all throughout, this has been a great presentation. I can tell you guys are working very hard. I remain a little um. Confused about the goal setting. Um, we're still talking about goals that. You know, at a fifty thousand foot level, obviously, we all want a water supply reliability. That is, you know, but. The issue for all of this scenario planning, if you're um, you know, for your decision model is the number, right? What number or set of numbers or scenarios worth of numbers are we trying to hit? And I think the, I understand we're gonna talk about that in May, but I keep being told we're gonna talk about it at the next meeting. So I'm. I'm concerned about the difference between setting goals for what we want the overall. Um, assessment to achieve versus, you know, how the different alternatives will achieve them. Um, I think that's an important thing to discuss, and maybe that just gets pushed off till May. But I I am concerned that we're into April and there really hasn't been. Much conversation about what it means quantitatively to go from. You know, the very high level goal that we all obviously agree on, which is, you know, a long term reliable and resilient. Uh, you know, supply, um, to to what is, what are we talking about? Um, the last presentation we had was last week, and it was all about, it really was fairly focused on the status quo. And if that's the goal, then that's the goal. But I feel like we do need to be. A bit more open, a bit more transparent, a bit more crisp and clear about it. I mean, I've, at this point, I've got a dozen emails and and, you know, questions from. Constituents who are very confused about what it means to be a setting of reliability goal. And and how we're going to get there and what the factors are to make that decision and I, you know, and is it a policy decision or is it an engineering decision? So. I just want to put that out there for the May meeting because um, we seem to not, we seem to keep not getting to it.
Good, good comments, Cynthia. I think the, you know, as my father used to say, that indecision is the key to flexibility. And uh, that's one of the problems here is that we're getting to the rubber meets the road stage of this planning. And, you know, our next month or two months is going to be where things need to start happening. Because I agree with you that I think we're looking at another dry year. And what we don't want to do is get caught in February of next year to be a repeat of February of this year.
Yeah, I don't want October of next year to be repeated this year. I mean, you know, I don't think any of us do. So I think we're all on the same page about the fifty thousand foot goal. The question is, how are we gonna come in for more of a landing? Even at ten thousand feet, we're eventually gonna get to the ground. But I mean. I I I just think to continue to continue. At at just this very, very abstract level, I think we need to move beyond that, and we need to move up beyond it very tangibly. And I think we need scenarios. I think we, I think for the board to do that, we need scenarios. And I'm not sure how we get to a decision without the benefit of those scenarios. And I think that's, that's where I'm unclear about whether that's gonna happen and when. Based on what I've seen today.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna get an answer out of that directly. I think this is something we just have to have confidence in our our technical crew.
I have confidence, legitimate question.
Well, the thing is, I don't think it's an answerable question. Okay, I don't, I don't think it's something.
It of the people who are here.
Of course, of course. But let me add one more thing before we do that. Uh, it seems to me that one thing missing in this list is getting a true assessment of public input. Um, which is something we've been kicking around, and I understand there are tasks moving forward to address that issue. So that we actually know where our owners believe we should be going and and have a feel for that. So that I think needs to be ground into one of these meetings. Um, I don't know exactly where. But that is something that I think that's extremely important is to hear the public out about what they think. Is the future of water in Marin and what uh, they would like to see us be doing. And then we can take that into account and uh, you know, make it one of the evaluation criteria.
I couldn't agree more, but I think it's hard for the public to do that without the scenario planning either.
Of course, of course, of course. It's apple, it's a, you know, the the egg and the chicken, right? I mean, it's, it's, you're right. It it's, and and that's why, again, I urge patience in this because I think these these cards will drop. As as time goes on, I have total confidence in Jacobs and our staff to uh, address those issues.
Is there some reason they're not being allowed to answer my question, Larry?
It's not a matter of being allowed.
I really would like to get an answer from Jacobs to my question, and I I really would like to stop being interrupted. So if we could just get my question on the table and get an answer, that would be great.
I'll give you my thoughts on.
Thank you.
On on this, Director Kohler, um. We are, we have those broad goal statements. Uh, we're starting to put. Together certain metrics associated with some of them, the ones that we can. We won't know whether those metrics are actually the correct ones until we start to see some of the scenarios. So that's. When you look at that second bullet in the May timeframe, I think that's probably around the the right time to. Assess both the metrics when we can have substantive evaluation to look at. So otherwise, it's a bit in the abstract. What is it? What does it actually mean? So I think. That's where I would like to have that discussion, bring the high level goal statements to, you know, to KPIs, the performance indicators. Um, but align that with what we're seeing from the the baseline reliability, at least initial look at the baseline reliability. So that's where I think that discussion is best had. Um, otherwise, it's a lot of uh, discussion around things we can't quantify yet. Which I, which is probably what your frustration is, that you want to quantify it, but we don't have the numbers yet to quantify it, so.
Okay, uh, that's fine. The I I saw the baseline reliability, I think, I think would be useful for before the meeting, Armin. And I think this would benefit all the board and to Larry Russell's point and the public to understand how you're defining baseline reliability. And what the elements are. That's why I'm interested in there being scenarios around. The issue of demand management and not, I mean, like I say, if it's going to be just, here's the number, this is what we're shooting for, then the board can have that conversation and the public can. But I'm, I'm, I'm unclear about why there seems to be a challenge about running different demand reduction. Scenarios. So I'm just putting that out there for May. And I, it, you know, I I think to your point, Larry Russell. Um, I think this is something that many members of the public are interested. I mean, I'm just getting texts and emails constantly like. You know, about what is going on here and why aren't we, why aren't we talking about this at a at a quantifiable level? So all I'm saying is. I agree with Larry. I think the public and the board need to have this information. I appreciate how hard you guys are working, but I. I think we need to be very crisp and clear that going from fifty thousand feet, we want to be reliable. To a number, this is the target we're shooting for. There needs to be some transparency about that, and we need to. Have information about what these scenarios look like. Does that make sense? Is that, is that resonating with you, Arman?
I think that's exactly where we're heading with the scenario. So, yeah, we're just not there, we're just not there yet, and I understand.
I got it.
Everyone wants to jump to the end game, but we're.
That's the last thing I'm.
From the process.
Right, I just want to make sure that we're not. We're not just going from fifty thousand to the ground without that kind of transparency and conversation. So thank you for confirming that. I appreciate it.
And I had one other thing, and it's quick, which is. When we get into the discussion of scenarios that Director Kohler has been talking about, can we get some examples? Of where it's been done and how it's been done. In different area, in different uh, agencies or by different agencies.
It it's part of everything that I've been doing for probably the past twenty years. We, the Colorado one is probably a prime example where we looked at. Pretty robust scenario planning. So we, we can share lots of. Uh, other agency examples and then present our examples, our our draft scenarios for for the board's discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
With the understanding, of course, that everything is somewhat unique. It's all similar, but different.
Yeah.
That's true too.
Okay, um, I think we've had heard from the board. Can we? Uh, talk to the public. Uh, do you have any feel, uh, Terry, about how many folks we're looking at?
Uh, we have four raised hands so far.
Okay, um. I'm I'm tempted to limit the time to a minute and a half. Uh, just to make sure that, because I believe that those four comments will trigger four or more and so forth and so on. So why don't we try that at a minute and a half and see how it goes? And if that's turning out to be too little, then we'll extend it.
Okay, let me set my timer here. Okay, so the first, the first two speakers I have is Mr. Larry Minnikes and then fourteen oh two. Mr. Minnikes, I've allowed you to speak. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Armin. I want to thank you and staff for a an excellent presentation. And um, you you touched upon creative solutions at one point, and one of them that you mentioned was watershed management. I think instead of a creative solution, that has to be. Part of what we are actually doing, which is watershed management, along with looking at these other opportunities. And the, uh, this crosses several areas. Um, the the map you showed us of. Future rainfall suggests that we're gonna be warmer and drier. In many of our years coming forward, which will suggest drier forests, which means. More fires, greater intensity of fires. So with watershed management, we have to look at what at water harvesting. Managing both for fire and for for doing a better job with less rainfall to capture more of that rainfall that is hitting the. In the watershed. And this also crosses into carbon sequestration because as we do this work. We are protecting and enhancing larger trees which sequester carbon. My time is very limited and there's a lot to cover here, but watershed management. Um, is, again, has to be part of what we're doing. So there I am at about ninety seconds. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Fourteen oh two, please.
Uh, James Holmes, Larchburg, four points, if I may. Uh, number one, I I have to say that the term uh. Demand management really does strike me as a bit of an Orwellian euphemism, and we should call it what it is, forest conservation. Uh, secondly, one of the factors that should be taken into account are the demands by the state for the vastly increased number of units. Which will mean a vastly increased number of water. That's a new variable which should be figured into the mix. Uh, number three, uh, I hope that also, uh, the uh, consultants will take into account the Chronicle article. On the front page of today's Chronicle, which uh, ref says, uh, Bay Area Study Predicts Much Bigger Mega Storms. It's by the Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory, and it predicts that we will get a lot more storms like we had in October. And that uh, uh, reinforces the need of, as Director Schmidt said, uh. Uh, that we're going to get a lot more uh, water in a short period of time, and we need to have a place to put it. And that brings me to my fourth point. Um, I did not hear any reference to the um. Consideration of flee, freeing us from the nineteen ninety-five order. Which uh, has been repeatedly cited as one of the primary obstacles to uh, storage augmentation. And uh, that should be considered. Um, Chair Russell made reference to uh. Julius Caesar and that, with that nineteen ninety-five order, we are dealing with uh, a policy reminiscent. Of another Roman emperor.
Thank you, Mr. Um, Holmes. The next speaker is Mr. Ed Ed Jamison, and then Gary D is right after him. Go ahead, Mr. Jamison.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Loud and clear.
Director Gibson got it right. This was a really outstanding presentation by the Jacobs folks tonight. They look like a truly robust team. The climate change data were truly sobering, not just the rainfall effects, but the likely highly temperatures are rapid. Aggravating drought effects. And more extreme rain swings mean reservoirs cannot be topped off to preserve our flood control capability. A potentially significant negative for our supply. As for the equity issue, for the pipeline East Bay mud would have required us to contribute to their low income and or customers who could not pay their bills. And or other such programs. MMWD can address the equity issue through such programs. The equity issue must not prevent us from having drought security. There is no legitimate reason why cost should block our attaining drought security. As for Miss Kohler's need to be setting goals, businesses that set goals but don't have a realistic plan fail. We need a realistic forecast to base our plan on, not a goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jameson. And our next speaker is Gary D. Go ahead, Gary.
Yes, Gary Dennison. Uh, I I just wanted to follow up uh, and appreciate Director Kohler's comments about the goals. Because uh, uh, it all goes back to the models. As I understand it, the model would be based upon our existing system, what we have. And from there, then you develop uh, your base case, your stress test and the severe stress. And the goals then would be built off those of if the directors uh, or the board wants to say that. In a s- a stress scenario, we wanted to ensure that we can provide two years of worth of water supply to our customers. Ninety-five percent of the time, or in a severe stress, we want to ensure that we can provide. Two years of water supply to our customers, seventy-five percent of the time. So I really think this model. And how it is built is going to be very important in in establishing and setting goals. So. I I listened to this meeting for almost two hours and I came to the same point, well, what's the end goal? So I I really encourage. Some very serious thought and discussion on that prior to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have no further speakers.
Okay, um. I think we're pretty well done. I think we've um, been around the horn with this subject for the moment. Any closing thoughts you'd like to add, Ben?
No, no, I I do want to thank uh, not just Jacobs, but our internal team. Really Paul and Lucy that are leading this and spending a lot of time on it, doing great work. And I I appreciate the engagement of the board and the public. And there's a lot more to come, obviously, and we look forward to, uh, you know, continuing the discussions and work.
And on behalf of the board, we concur completely and are um, pleased with our progress. And, you know, there are many more steps to come in where we're headed and. This thing, this task is going to get driven to a conclusion that will result, in my opinion, in a successful. Approach to long term water planning for uh, Southern Marin. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, I think we're done. I'm going to uh, call the meeting to a close. And thank you very much uh, for the Jacobs folks and for our staff, as Ben just said. Well done.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night.